Meeting of March 8, 2022 is called to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of Agenda and Order of Priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? President Albrecht.
I have two motions. The first one, I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda a resolution supporting Governor Gretchen Whitmer's fiscal year 23 state budget executive recommendation following item C.
Very good. So moved. Do we have a second?
Support.
We have support from Dr. Pugh. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We could have a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Pass.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Pass.
Strahan absent Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries.
What does pass mean? Is that abstain? Or is that? I don't know. I'm not familiar with what pass means. Does that mean you just don't? You're not voting at all?
Robert's rules. Yeah, just Robert's rules. Just pass.
That doesn't answer my question.
Means pass.
Okay.
We have a second motion?
We do. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the agenda item 12J, Discussion and Action on Board Norms.
So we have a motion to remove the board norms discussion for this, for this agenda. Do we have a second?
Support.
We have support from Dr. Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none. We could have a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Strahan absent Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Are there any other motions before the board relative to agenda change? Hearing none. If I could have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Don't move.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. I appreciate that. It's good to see someone with caffeine in their system early this morning. Could I have a second?
Second.
There we go. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Pass.
Strahan absent Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you very much. At this time, Marilyn Schneider, our State Board Executive, will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Yes. You have just been listening to Dr. Michael Rice. He is the Chair of the State Board of Education and also serves as the Superintendent of Public Instruction, also known as the State Superintendent. To his left is Dr. Cassandra Albrecht, President of the Board from Dearborn. Going around the table, Dr. Pamela Pugh, Vice President from Saginaw. Ms. Tiffany Tilly is Secretary from West Bloomfield. She is up above here in the risers. And coming back to the table, there is a vacant seat here for Ellen Kojan Lipton, who is joining the meeting in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. She's joining virtual. She's able to vote. She also serves as the Chair of the Board's Legislative Committee. She's from Huntington Woods. At the end of, or next to that seat is Nikki Snyder. She's the Board's Legislative Committee member from Dexter. And next to her is Ms. Leah Porter, the 2021-22 Michigan Teacher of the Year. When she's not here with us, she's teaching third grade at Wilcox Elementary School and Holt Public Schools. Going across the table is the ex officio seat for the Governor. And she, the Governor, is being represented by Ms. Stephanie O'Day. She's the Governor's K-12 Policy Advisor. She's joining virtually. The ex officio seat is a non-voting seat. And then Dr. Judith Pritchett. She is the Board's NASB delegate and State Board of Education Legislative Committee member from Washington Township. Jason Strahan is the Board, on the Board's Legislative Committee. He's from Novi, and we expect him to join later virtually. And next to me is Mr. Tom McMillan, Treasurer from Oakland Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Public may register to provide comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 p.m. Those wishing to make public comment must register before 1:00 p.m. today. To provide public comment by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage, www.michigan.gov/MDE. To provide public comment in person, please complete a public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed on the MDE webpage at www.michigan.gov/MDE. First item on the committee, the whole agenda, is educational updates related to COVID-19. The update will be brief. Two years ago this Thursday, we began our March 10, 2020 State Board of Education meeting with no COVID-19 cases in the state. By the end of the day, we had had two announced cases. The next day, I visited the State Emergency Operations Center, CIOC, for the first time with Kyle Garant, our Deputy Superintendent for Business and Operations. And we attended a meeting there with a number of individuals from across state government on COVID preparedness. Johns Hopkins Coronavirus Center COVID map was displayed across a large screen in the front of the room. There were 121,000 cases at the time worldwide, 121,000 cases worldwide. One day later, the Governor announced an initial three-week shutdown of schools. I remember when we hit 1 million cases worldwide. I remember saying to a relative, "At this rate, we could hit 500 million cases before the pandemic is over." With 448 million cases worldwide to date, I may have underestimated. Fortunately, though, the growth rate for cases has plummeted, particularly in the last month. In Michigan, since our last State Board meeting four years ago, the number of COVID-19 cases has risen from 2,191,190 to 2,62,354, an increase of 43,235 cases, or approximately 2.1%, with the number of deaths increasing from 30,417 to 32,134, a rise of 1,717 deaths, or roughly 5.6%. Our vaccination rates board continue to climb slowly but steadily. As of yesterday afternoon, 70.4% of Michigan residents ages 16 and above have received at least an initial vaccination, with 48.2% of students 12 to 15 years old and 27.4% of our students 5 to 11 years old with at least an initial vaccination. As we increased the percentage of students vaccinated, we reduced disruptions to in-person instruction and adverse impact on student achievement as a result. In total, more than 15.3 million doses of vaccine have been administered to Michigan residents. Worldwide, 10.6 billion vaccine doses have been administered. It is with the vaccination of significant portions of our population that we are going to be able to minimize COVID cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. Unvaccinated individuals are far more likely to be vulnerable than our vaccinated individuals for sickness, hospitalization, and death. According to the Johns Hopkins Coronavirus Resource Center, as I mentioned before, worldwide there have been more than 448 million COVID cases, more than 6 million COVID deaths as of last night. It's an extraordinary number over the last two years. Nationally, there have been 79.3 million cases, 960,000 deaths, with 17.3% of the world's cases, 15.9% of the world's deaths. We remain the leader in the world in both categories. To reiterate, vaccines are important. The growing number of Michiganders who are getting vaccinated are protecting not simply themselves, but others as well. You're helping to reduce sicknesses, hospitalizations, and death, and to increase the numbers of days and hours that our children and staff are in person in school. The layering of mitigation strategies requires masks where recommended, social distancing, proper hygiene, and at times testing, quarantining, and isolating as well. There have been some recent changes in federal, state, and local COVID guidance. To reflect the decline in COVID cases in Michigan and across the country as the Omicron surge recedes, new guidance regarding mask-wearing has been issued at the federal and state levels. At the federal level, on February 25, 2022, the CDC released an updated framework for understanding risk in communities. The CDC's guidelines for school and early care settings now follow the same recommendations as those for the community in which the facility is located, based on community level. Communities are able, but not required, to adopt higher standards based on local conditions and factors. CDC provided updated contact tracing protocols for school settings. The state level, on February 16, 2022, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services released updated guidance. There are currently no counties in Michigan with countywide indoor mask mandates. Many school districts have also lifted mask mandates, though they remain in place in some school districts. So board, that is my brief update on COVID-19. If there are any questions or comments, I'd be happy to entertain them at this time. Hearing and hearing and seeing and hearing and seeing none, we will move on. Next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is presentation on Michigan's top 10 Strategic Education Plan goal to increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school. This presentation focuses on Michigan's top 10 Strategic Education Plan goal, goal number five, to increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school. This update includes details of the recently released 2020-2021 graduation data and associated trends, as well as details on efforts underway in support of this goal. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student, and School Support, and Dr. Scott Kennachneck, Deputy Superintendent of P-20 System and Student Transitions. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome. It's good to have you today.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning, Board. We come before you today to share metrics and outcomes for one of the eight Michigan top 10 Strategic Education Plan goals. Our focus will highlight goal five, which is to increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school. The data we share will highlight four-, five-, and six-year graduation cohorts with emphasis on growth for 10, five-, and one-year comparisons. Noting here that the blue data line shows growth for the 10-year time span from 2010-11 to 2020-21. The four-year cohort rising rate indicates a 6.2 percentage increase, rising from 74.3% in 2010-11 to 80.5% in 2020-21. The five-year and six-year rates also show increases of 5.4 and 5.1 percentage point increases respectively, with the five-year rising from 79.2% to 84.6% and the six-year from 80% to 85.1%. Looking at the 10-year period, it is very important to note that in eight of the last 10 years, four-year graduation cohort rates have increased. Let's look at the changes by category, starting with the Asian ethnicity group. The four-year cohort over the past 10 years increased nearly six percentage points, and the five- and six-year cohorts nearly five percentage points, with 4.5 and 4.8 points African-American ethnicity group, over the past decade, shows double-digit increases for each four-, five-, and six-year cohorts, with 10.6, 11.0, and 12.0 percentage points respectively. For Hispanic or Latino, we notice here that they also show the same double-digit increases for all three cohorts, four-, five-, and six-year, with 12.1, 10.1, and 13.5 percentage points respectively. For our Native American or Alaska Native students, nearly double for the four- and five-year cohorts over the last 10 years. Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, the four-year cohort rates over the last decade show a rise of 25 percentage points. An important note here is that this population of students trends a high mobility rate, and the enrollment fluctuates and has been noted as being one of the lower enrollment populations of students. When we look at two or more races, over the past 10 years, there have been increases in both the four- and five-year cohorts. The six-year cohort, however, is not the same, with a 4.5 percentage point decrease. For our white students, the trend over the 10-year period increases for all three, the four-, five-, and six-year cohort. The next series of slides will focus on five-year percentage point changes in the comparison to the one-year. For the five-year range, there was an increase in grad rates for all students, as presented here. With respect to the one-year, from 2019-20 to 2021, the four-year cohort reports a slight decrease. Unsurprisingly, one would or could argue, given the challenge of the last year, in the pandemic, we would have expected a greater decline. This data for the state of Michigan is supported, as this has been the trend across the nation. There are several states that reported a slight decrease from 2020 to 2021. Focusing on gender, here you can see that for five years, females and males show a rate increase for each of the four-, five-, and six-year cohorts. For the one-year in comparison, specifically 2019-20 to 2021, both males and females have a light percentage point decrease, again attributed to the pandemic. Pivoting to the one-year and five-year percentage point metrics, we see to the very far right, five-year data with increases for all three cohorts for the groups Asian, Black or African-American, and Hispanic or Latino students. Here we have increase for the Native American five-year percentage point change, as you can see to the far right, not so much for Native Hawaiian, again, as stated earlier, due to being a small group of enrollees coupled with distinct mobility. For two or more races, as we take a very close look at the five-year trend, all cohorts four-, five-, and six- increased for the period of 2015-16 to 2020-21. In comparison, the one-year of 2019-20 to 2021 decreased for the four-year cohort. White students show percentage point increases for each cohort, except, again, for the one-year percentage point data of the four-year cohort specific to 1920 to 2021. And here, we take a very close look at the economically disadvantaged, which shows gains for all four, for all cohorts four-, five-, and six- during the five-year trend period. However, the one-year from 2019-20 to 2021 of the four-year cohort shows a near triple decline in comparison to the non-economically disadvantaged data point. For our English learners, the five-year rate changes are mostly slight increases in comparison to the one-year, with light decline for the four-year and five-year cohorts. And now we pivot to students with disabilities, and that data will be shared by Dr. Kennachek.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman.
You're welcome.
So the story for students with disabilities regarding their four-, five-, and six-year grad rates is very similar to the story for all students. It was noted on Slide 13. If you look at the five-year growth for students with disabilities, you will see a significant growth of 1.6%, which is actually double that of all students that was noted on Slide 13. There was a dip, as there was with all students, on Slide 13 as well, from 1920 to 2021, a decline of about 2.3 percentage points. But overall, the story is very similar to the graduation rate for all students. With that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Chapman.
Thank you, Dr. Kennachek. Board, the next two slides focus on four-year graduation rate change. The blue bars represent economically disadvantaged for the 2020 and 2021 years. The red and pink represent non-economically disadvantaged for the same years. Focusing solely on the blue bars, we see a decrease in the four-year rate for all groups represented here, including American Indian, African-American, two or more races, and our white students. The data story here is that if you are economically disadvantaged or poor, there is a distinct chance that you will likely not graduate with your four-year cohort. Similarly, board, noting the same legend as the previous slide, for Asian and Hispanic or Latino students, economically disadvantaged students saw declines in the four-year graduation rate. Native Hawaiians saw a slight increase in the four-year from 2019-20 to 2021. And now we pivot to the efforts on the part of the Michigan Department of Education to support the increasing numbers of students that graduate from high school. Dr. Kennachek?
Great. Thank you, Dr. Chapman. So the numbers have shown an increase over the last 10 years with our graduation rates. And Dr. Chapman, I would like to point out a couple of the initiatives that we've been working on, in some cases jointly, across our divisions, to help with the effort. The first thing I'd like to talk about is the creation of the Special Education Instructional Leadership Network, or otherwise known as SELM. So this is an outgrowth of MAISA, the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators, and it really came out of the Path Forward Action Plan that was presented to the board back in January 2020, in terms of ways that we could increase the outcomes for our students with disabilities. So SELM was formed in 2020. Terry Rink and myself meet with the SELM Director and other ISD superintendents on a monthly basis to talk about a number of issues and problem solve through a number of issues. Listed below are the goals of SELM. They have six goals. I'd like to draw your attention to the last three, because they fit hand in glove with the goals of our Michigan Department of Education and our top 10 Strategic Education Plan. And developing a plan to address critical shortage areas is a goal of theirs, developing a targeted call to action around special education funding. And the final goal is around preschool inclusion, and they work closely with another entity within MAISA called ECAN on that. Our department has been doing a lot of work around preschool inclusion, because we know that students can't graduate on the back end if they're not included on the front end. And so that joint effort between the department and SELM will certainly pay off in the future. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Chapman to talk a little bit about EWIMS.
Thank you, Dr. Kennachek. EWIMS, Early Warning Intervention and Monitoring System. That is what that acronym represents. In April of 2020, MDE's Office of Educational Supports, or OES, contracted with the former American Institutes for Research, AIR, Technical Assistance Consultant, to lead and support the implementation of EWIMS, MDE's Early Warning Intervention and Monitoring System. 14 MDE staff participated in training on the EWIMS evidence-based seven-step process, as you note here. 12 of those trainees became members of a cross-office EWIMS core team. As Dr. Kennachek shared, these efforts have not been germane to just one division, but we have definitely been collaborating and working together in meeting this goal. The core team has developed documents, including a fidelity rubric and facilitator guide, to support our local education agencies in understanding EWIMS and the benefits of its implementation specific to increasing graduation rates. Dr. Kennachek will now expound on the use of personal curriculum as an option for completing the Michigan curriculum graduation requirements.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. So personal curriculum was another domain of the Path Forward, specific to students with disabilities. But we know that the personal curriculum pertains to all students, students with disabilities and students without. Students are eligible in grades nine through 12. And over the last two years, Dr. Chapman's staff has been doing a tremendous amount of work, creating more awareness around the personal curriculum. It's a tool we already have. It's a tool in our toolkit. And you can see the numbers there below. Her team has developed and implemented 68 trainings in ISDs, in some instances, locals would attend as well, 66 trainings in local districts, and 25 trainings to outside agencies. And you can see the work paying off. So these are numbers of students who are accessing the personal curriculum. So this number is for all students, and you can see the growth from '16, '17 to 2021, almost a 20% increase in the utilization of, again, of a tool that we already have called the personal curriculum. It certainly dipped a bit as the pandemic started, but the overall number continues to increase. This particular slide and the numbers associated therein are specific to students with disabilities, and this is encouraging as well. So we see over a five-year period, an over 50% increase in the utilization of personal curriculums. And the increase is going to be highlighted in terms of the next slide, in terms of what happens when students with disabilities utilize the personal curriculum. So these numbers on this slide, again, are students with IEPs and students without IEPs. There's two cohorts of students. So in the middle column is the class of 2017. The far right column, obviously, the class of 2020. What the numbers show us, that if you are a student with an IEP and you do not have a personal curriculum, or you do not utilize a personal curriculum, the graduation rate is 53%. You can see a 20 to, excuse me, a 32% increase if you go one column over, if you're a student with a disability and you do utilize a personal curriculum. So you can see the power in the tool. Below that are the same numbers, but for students who do not have IEPs. 83% graduation rate without a personal curriculum. Utilizing a personal curriculum, that rate increases to 95%. Same concept, just a different cohort of students, but you can see, from 2017 to 2020, those numbers, again, continue to climb. This slide is even more exciting. So in the middle of the slide, you can see the same numbers that we saw on the previous slide regarding students with IEPs in 2017 utilizing a personal curriculum. You can see the 85% graduation rate if they utilize it. You can see the 53% graduation rate if they do not. The interesting aspect of this slide is there are additional benefits to the utilization of a PC. On the far left, you can see a much smaller dropout rate for students with IEPs who utilize a personal curriculum, 3% dropout rate compared to 15% who do not. If you go over to the far right, you're looking at college enrollment there. Students, again, utilizing the PC who have IEPs are more likely to enroll in college at a rate of 32% compared to 25% who did not. So again, encouraging numbers with this particular tool. With that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Chapman.
Thank you, Dr. Kennachek. Expanding secondary programs offers opportunities for students to engage, explore... explore, and excel. And I like to call that my E cubed means of excellence or success. The expansion is clearly specific to CTE, or Career and Technical Education, early middle college, dual enrollment, advanced placement, and international baccalaureate opportunities. The most significant change that we note here is the enrollment increase of early middle college at a whopping 84% over the five-year period. And now we pivot to a very beneficial effort that we have here within the Michigan Department of Education, Graduation Alliance, which was funded last year by our state legislature. Graduation Alliance has been heavily involved in Michigan with its Dropout Recovery Program. The Dropout Recovery Program is centered around contacting students and families and assisting them in addressing the students' academic, social, and emotional needs so they can earn the necessary credits for graduation. Graduation Alliance has worked with 60 districts in Michigan and approximately 1,000 students since the pandemic began. The second program that we would like to highlight today through Graduation Alliance is Engage Michigan. This, too, is a collaborative partnership with schools, families, and students to promote engagement and remove barriers for engagement. The program gives students academic coaches to answer questions, connect them with local community resources, and literally develop a plan to finish the school year successfully and strong. Graduation Alliance is currently assisting 126 Michigan school districts, and they have received 40,000 student referrals to recapture out of the possibility of dropout. That pivots us to our data specific to dropout. We have some interesting news to share today, Board. This slide shares four, five, and six-year cohort dropout rates. It is that most believe that graduation rates and dropout rates tug on one another. It is presumed that if graduation rates improve, then dropout rates deteriorate. Not necessarily, however. Graduation rates, neither of these rates, I'm sorry, the sums don't come to 100 as a rule. Continuous enrollment affects this data. Focusing on the far right on the slide, we see that all students over the past five years for cohorts four, five, and six have a decrease in dropout rates. The data that we see and we are sharing has been reviewed and prepared by our SEPI Director, Tom Howe, and his staff. They clearly share that students in Michigan are striving and thriving towards graduation, even during a pandemic, and more specifically, if it takes longer as they continue to push forward and become a part of their five- and/or six-year cohorts. That says declines here are good. In closing, we highlight again that the trend over a decade shows that graduation rates are increasing and dropout rates are decreasing in this great state of Michigan. And at this time, Board, we would like to take the opportunity to say thank you for hearing us on the metrics of this Goal Five, which, again, is to increase the percentage of students who graduate from Michigan high schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, Dr. Kenechek. Board members, questions or comments? Questions or comments? President Olbridge.
So thank you very much for this information. And the 10-year numbers, you know, it's hard to believe where we were 10 years ago. But definitely seeing some great improvement there. I'm curious, if students move into a homeschool or a private school situation, how are those students tracked in these numbers?
Even when they are in a homeschool situation, they do have the responsibility to report where their growth is and if they are moving steadily along. In order for that diploma to be a certified diploma in the state of Michigan, they do have to have sign-off within a school district to verify that. And so that is data that is tracked. Specifically, how it is assigned, Dr. Olbridge, in terms of that local school district, that's information that we would need to report back to the Board. But we can definitely obtain that for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other reflections? This data, by the way, Board, typically comes out in our state in February, late February. And it's a little bit of a paradox, isn't it? Because one says children graduate late May, early June, mid-June, sometimes a summer graduation in August. And one would imagine that those graduation rates would come back more quickly. But to President Olbridge's question, the challenge is not the children who go through a normal or traditional path and graduate and are easy to track. The greater challenge is children who leave, and what happens to them? If they leave and drop out, they're counted as dropouts. If they leave and do not drop out, to Dr. Chapman's earlier point, they continue in the system. They are neither graduates nor dropouts. They are continuers, if you will. And the tracking of that group of young people is the most challenging tracking that takes place. Did they leave the state? If so, what happened to them? Did they move within the state? If so, what happened to them? Because the rule of thumb is, is that they are mine in my local school district. If they leave and drop out, that is counted against the local school district. If they graduate from the local school district, obviously, it benefits the local school district's numbers. If they leave and go somewhere else, that student becomes a student of that other district. And that tracking, though seemingly simple, is, as you point out, not simple at all. And particularly when young people leave the state, particularly when young people initially drop out, and then when they drop back in. I see Ms. Bailey in the audience, and I know her to be a longtime educator in the Lansing School District, and she well knows this issue of young people coming into a district, leaving a district, returning to a district, or returning to another district. The fact that you've left doesn't mean you've left in perpetuity. So this tracking takes a number of months. SEPI works it very hard. Local school districts work it very hard. And we end up being able to report out in mid-late February. Many states don't report out that quickly. So it is quite a challenge. And I know Dr. Pritchett, from her experience as a local educator, as an ISD educator, knows the same thing. Other questions, comments, thoughts? Ms. Snyder?
How many students have left the public education system since 1819?
So I can get you that information. I don't have it. I'll get it to you before the end of the meeting. What I can tell you is that there was a light decline yearly for many years, between 8,000 and 12,000, 8,000 and 13,000 children a year, given our demographic trend, that is to say, given declines in birth rates and a diminution in the enrollment. And SEPI, which tracks this, has recorded this pretty substantially. The decrease, if I could, please. The decrease that was most substantial was last year's decrease. We lost a number of young people, grades one through 12, and we also lost kindergarten young people as well. That enrollment last year to this year has largely flattened, but it has not reinflated.
So does SEPI report to my school data? Is that the school data that's available?
It does.
I ask just because comparatively speaking, from 1819, when you look at that site, we've lost north of 70,000 students from 1819 to 2021. And then if you look at grad rate data, it's not just a slight decrease. It's under 1%, but that translates to almost 1,000 students. So when you think about having lost tens of thousands of students and then almost 1,000 students not graduating, I think it's a little bit different of a picture than what we're painting here. So I don't really want to, you know, make that look better than it really is. I think we need to be careful about being clear about what pandemic policy has done. So, because we can look at 10 years ago, but 10 years ago looks nothing like what we've been through in the last two or three years. And in the assessments, we need to make now in terms of what direction we move in going forward. And then I'll just, you know, cap that off with, I do appreciate the comments on IEPs and personal curriculum. Thank you.
So a few things, Board. We presented on graduation rates, 10 years, five years, and one year. We did it in slices. We did it by ethnic group. We did it by socioeconomic status. We did it by English language learner or non-English language learner. We did it by students with disabilities and non-students with disabilities, and students without disabilities. We cut these up in a wide range of different ways. Decline in Michigan enrollment for kindergarteners has nothing to do with graduation rates. It's completely non-germane to the topic at hand. There are children that either left the public school system last year or did not enter the public school system because their parents chose not to enroll their children as kindergartners last year. That's a well-reported upon phenomenon. But what happened with four- and five-year-olds is not related to graduation rate in 2021. So I just wanted to clarify that for the Board and community and make sure that everyone is cognizant of that. Other questions or concerns? Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. I do appreciate the information on the personal curriculum. I've been an advocate of personal curriculum since it was given as an option when Michigan Merit was passed. So I am hopeful in the increase in those numbers. The EWIMS, did I pronounce that correctly? You indicate that there's been train the trainer. I know that, especially at the secondary level, it's difficult when students come in and administrators, teachers begin to recognize right away that we have a student who's going to be struggling here for a myriad of reasons. Without going into major detail, the EWIMS system begins to track grades, attendance, and then there is intervention, or how does that work?
Sure. Thanks for the question, Dr. Pritchett. So, yes, attendance and academic achievement, those are the foundational factors. And so because those factors then help gauge or determine, is there some type of additional intervention or support that may be needed in terms of a wraparound for the student so we can develop a plan and move the student forward? And EWIMS is not just specific to, we would not wait, or we don't wait, to the senior year. EWIMS is most effective at the secondary level with that very special population of students, our ninth graders coming into high school. And so effective EWIMS programs are at that starting point. And so if there is a student at ninth grade that's showing those signs, a very strategic intervention plan is put for to help keep them, hopefully, on that four-year cohort track. If not, we still, as we reported today, encourage and have students that may have to do the five or six year.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Just if we could, because Dr. Pritchett raised the issue of personal curriculum, and maybe, Dr. Kenechek, you could explain how we develop, how a person gets a personal curriculum?
Sure. So when legislation was first passed regarding personal curriculum, it had to be a teacher or counselor request. That changed in, I believe, 2013 or 2014. It became law that if a parent requests a personal curriculum, then a personal curriculum must be granted. So there are over 900 districts in the state, and many of them do it very differently. But typically, there is a team that's pulled together. If it's a student with an IEP team, it's the IEP team most regularly. And they take a look at the standards and the requirements of the Michigan Merit Corps. And then certainly, if possible, make adjustments to the student's curriculum, making it a personal curriculum. And those changes have changed over the years to include the use of CTE credits to count for credit. In some instances, if you're a student with an IEP, there are some science options. There's math options. And so over the years, the tools within the toolbox itself have even changed and morphed. And they start when a student's in the ninth grade. I always encourage parents in districts to start having conversations in the eighth grade as they're planning, because that year goes very quickly. But we've seen a great benefit with them. Again, the aspect of the Path Forward was we just need to continue to create awareness. And again, Dr. Chapman's team has done outstanding work, despite a pandemic, to continue to create awareness around the personal curriculum.
We had a joint conference on this with MASSP because there was some question about whether the flexibilities in law were being fully accessed. And what we argued, and what MASSP Executive Director Wendy Stedeb argued, was they exist. They're valuable. But we can do a better job at the local school district level of accessing those flexibilities or making known those flexibilities. And so we had a joint conference attended by several hundred educators. Seems to me at, I want to say the Radis, is that right?
Don't tell.
Yeah. And MASSP, MDE, and really, part of that was promoting the virtues of the personal curriculum. Although the personal curriculum has been accessed to a greater extent, we still think that there are some opportunities there. This is not a diminution of the standard by any means. It's meeting the standard in a different way or ways. And we think that it's more than legitimate. Children come to us with different needs, different capacities, and we have to serve them in different ways as well. So thank you very much for sharing that. Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Mr. McMillan?
Found it interesting, the use of words. The state superintendent said that the government school districts feel that the kids are mine. The kids are the government's. Just wanted to read the revised school code. Section 380.10, it is the natural fundamental right of parents and legal guardians to determine and direct the care, teaching, and education of their children. Not that it needs to be in state law. That's something that's natural. It's something that should be obvious, but certainly, people feel that's not the case. I find it troubling that the state superintendent suggests that the reduction in students is merely kindergarten non-enrollment when we know that due to the politicization of the classroom, people are pulling their kids out in high school, in middle school, throughout all ages. But it doesn't surprise me that he tries to make it sound like it's something very small. And he didn't have a problem with parents being called domestic terrorists. So there is also no requirement of homeschoolers to report anything to local districts. I know that if the district or the government thinks these kids are theirs, that yes, they should track the kids. But they're not theirs. They're the parents. There's no tracking required. It's none of the government's business what these parents are doing and how they're educating their children. Certainly, in many areas, the hostility towards these children and parents are making it so that more and more are pulling them out of government schools. No question, I just had to refute the pontification of the state superintendent recently, today.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Lipton?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Chapman, and thank you, Dr. Kenechek. This is a goal that is particularly exciting for me. And I know that in the wake of a pandemic, it's always, well, not always, but I think that it is sometimes human nature to look for doom and gloom. But this is a particular goal that I am particularly excited about. Just by way of background, I've been in the college access space for about a decade now. When I first got to the legislature, I had the distinct privilege of being able to advocate for one of my school districts in Hazel Park to become a Promise Zone. for one of my school districts in Hazel Park to become a Promise Zone. When I left the legislature, I became actively formation in the statewide Association of Promise Zones, and I am still in that space. So, I would like to commend you and to also reiterate that this is a fantastic goal of the State Board, and it's also something that we should all be very, very excited about, because we are moving in the right direction. When those before me decided to include this as a, as a, as a goal to measure, by virtually every measure, we as a state are moving in the right direction. And I would also say, because of my work in national post-secondary success work, that we are not necessarily a leader yet, but we are moving in that direction when we're compared, when our numbers are compared to other states. So, I'm here to say thank you for this presentation and to also say that we should all be very, very heartened and optimistic by these numbers. I would like to just point out that I thank you for looking at four, five, and six-year rates, because I can tell you from experience, working in post-secondary success, college access work for a decade, that we are starting to rethink how we get students through high school and have that handoff to post-secondary opportunities. And sometimes, there are many students that need an extra year or two for, for many, many reasons to be able to make that, that leap. So, I appreciate that we are starting to expand our, our measures beyond simply four-year graduation rates. So, thank you for that. I do appreciate that you're also looking closely at students with disabilities and students with IEPs. And I, and I would like to say that in the post-secondary success and college access space, that many of the, many of the personalized guidance that we have seen in the special education space, we are using and utilizing successfully in the general education space, in terms of how we look at students individually as they move through high school and onto post-secondary work. And I also appreciate the looking particularly at populations of economically disadvantaged students, because as many of you know, the Promise Zone concept is based on developing post-secondary success measures and college access measures, particularly in originally 10, now up to 13 of our most economically distressed communities. And I would encourage people in the department to partner with the excellent work that's happening in our Promise Zones as well, in terms of how on the ground we can move students through, through high school and onto post-secondary options, whether it be college, trade school, whatever their post-secondary dreams are, if you will. I also note the work of the Graduation Alliance. The Engage Michigan and the Academic Coach projects are extremely exciting. Again, these are tools that the department is using, but again, I would encourage also the integration with work that's already being done in other school districts, whether it's through Promise Zones, as well as the excellent work of the Michigan College Access Network, which is working to place college advisors in schools that wish to increase their college-going culture and post-secondary attainment. Excellent, excellent work, and perhaps we would even invite members of MCAN to share their work with us. I think I would like to just leave all of you with the notion that there is a lot of excellent work happening on the ground in our schools around the state. And an integrated model, I think, is really a very, very powerful tool. Many schools don't have the capacity to work with every single student, guidance counselors. And many of the schools in which our Promise Zones are operating have 500 and 600 student-to-one caseloads. And so, the work that we can do to assist, whether it be providing college access advisors, goes a long way in helping that handoff between high school and post-secondary, because a lot of students oftentimes need that additional guidance and coaching, in terms of taking what they've done in, in high school and moving it on to a post-secondary plan. So, again, I would just like to say, there's a lot of exciting work, and I'm extremely grateful to the work that the department is doing, and as well as the work that the Michigan Promise Zones are doing and the Michigan College Access Network is doing, to help our students succeed in whatever post-secondary option that they, that they dream of. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Just a couple of notes to clean up prior to, prior to leaving. I appreciate Ms. Lipton raising up, I'm sorry, did you have a?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to do the benediction, and we're going to move on.
Just a final few comments as well.
There you go.
So, I just really wanted to thank you, because this information that we've seen in the news, it's really complicated. So, you know, thank you for the work that you're doing to address these, these rates, but also for bringing this presentation forward to clear up that information. I do want to make note that, you know, those of us who are sitting at this table have to be very careful, because we do have board members that have been on record talking about ending the requirement of school attendance. And so, as we talk about these numbers, we have to be mindful of that. To that point, the other thing I want to, to raise is that, you know, parents definitely want to know that the people who are sitting at this table care about their children and are able to express that in a genuine way. And I know that this wasn't necessarily focused on a school and student attendance, but it would be interesting, because it's come up a little bit, to hear a little bit about the attendance, the attendance rates, because I did receive a phone call where someone was asking about the African-American rates increasing, which was good to see in comparison to some of the other rates when we look from last year's attendance records to this year. So, would love to hear more about that.
The, thank you, Dr. Pugh. The attendance last year was tracked in a different way. And so, the ability to draw longitudinal conclusions about attendance year to year, I think, is, is challenging. We can talk about that. We can certainly invite people in who do, deal with that on a regular basis. And we can share what happened with attendance year to year. But the way attendance was calculated based on state statute last year was very different from what it was prior to last year, very different from what it is this year. So, happy to share the data, but, but the data really need to be footnoted and explained, because simply looking at a series of numbers, I think pre-pandemic, you can do that. I think post-pandemic, you can do that. I think during the pandemic, when the rules for counting changed, I think it's hard to draw conclusions within that. Happy to have that conversation. Thank you. Ms. Snyder, to you.
Just a few final comments. I would just echo some of the things that Ellen was saying. Having guidance, you know, post-graduation is always very helpful for many students on a number of levels, which could be a whole nother conversation. But I do want to circle back around to some of the discussion about enrollment data and graduation data. And just, and make, make sure it's clear, I'm not exactly positive about the data. Again, I wouldn't compare things to 10 years ago, but I don't need to belabor it. I would say that just as we wouldn't not perceive this data with the concept of E-WIMS, like we're talking about, early intervention, understanding that early intervention and the evaluation of how things are going here impacts what happens here, right? So, enrollment data of K through three is a significant concept, and whether or not those tens of thousands, again, north of 70,000 kids that left, students that left public schools, we should explore that number and understand what it means. Because they had an option to stay in public school and learn remotely, and they chose not to, right? The parents and the, and the students chose not to. I could make assumptions, but I'm not going to do that. I think the exploration of that number is something that is extremely important when we consider numbers all together right now and where we're at in public education. And when we don't assume they're yours if they're not there or they left, then we have to consider why they're leaving. And so, to me, the enrollment data is absolutely an evaluation in and of itself that we can choose to explore or not. So, and especially, again, like we wouldn't leave out E-WIMS as we consider the graduate, graduation rate, we should not leave out how many kids have left public education and the exploration of why in considering it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, so three, three or four quick things. First of all, great presentation. Thank you very much. Very rich. We appreciate it. That's number one. Number two, there was a reference to Promise Zones by, by Ms. Lipton, and I think that, that bears underscoring the, the power of young people having a future that they can afford, that they, that they can think that they can access. It's one thing to grow up knowing you're going to college, knowing that your, your parents will figure out how to make that happen. It's another thing to not know that and be, be given that, that opportunity. So, Promise Zones have a tremendous amount of promise. There's no question about that. And my hat's off to the people who are in local communities trying to help us accentuate the promise of our young people through Promise Zones. I want to thank our local educators. They have had a very, very challenging couple of years, as have our young people, as have their parents. And I think that they are working very, very hard under very, very challenging circumstances. I think we've improved in the state over the last 10 years, over the last five years. And I think everyone across the country has been challenged with the pandemic over the last two years, some more than others. Certainly, what the data is showing is that to be challenged coming into a pandemic is to be substantially challenged during a pandemic. And so, to have particular challenges as you enter a pandemic is to be all the more challenged by a pandemic. This is not simply my opinion, although it is my opinion, but it's the, it's the outgrowth of research as, as well. Children with particular challenges pre-pandemic, children with profound disabilities, number one, children who, who are English language learners, fledgling readers, young people who, bless you, in poverty, all of those young people, in aggregate, in aggregate, not any individual child, but in aggregate, have been challenged more than their, than their peers without similar challenges. So, I just share that, because that is pretty well-established in the literature, including literature in the state of Michigan, that, that we've shared and that we'll continue to share with our research partners, from our research partners, including Epic MSU. The only other thing is, the only other thing is, if I could, President Albrecht, the only other thing that I wanted to clear up is, on enrollment, there was a demographic decrease over a period of years, an annual decrease, you know, 10, 12,000 young people a year. Last year, the decline was approximately 55,000 young people. And we can have Tom Howell from SEPI here, and he can talk through the historic trend over the last 15 years, the decline last year, which was a function of really two things primarily, if you will, or three things. One, the historic diminution, 10, 12,000 young people a year on average over a period of years, so that's one. Two, the outmigration of some families to, to private schools, to parochial schools, to homeschooling. And then, three, the holding back of young people and not entering young people in kindergarten immediately. So, those were really the three forces that were responsible for the 55,000 student decline last year, as opposed to the, you know, the, the small five-digit number decrease, which we've seen over a period of years. And again, Tom Howell, SEPI director, can speak to this more substantially. This year, the numbers are relatively flat. They are unaudited to date, so I'm reluctant to share them. But what we know is with the unaudited numbers, that there is a light decline, but it is a decline not only less than the 55,000, it's markedly less than the historic decline over the last decade or so, pre-pandemic. So, it's a single, it's, it's a four-digit decline and a small four-digit decline at, at that. President Albrecht, to you.
No, I was just, I was curious where these numbers are coming from, but it just looks like the MySchool data has not posted the 20, 21, 22 numbers yet. So, maybe that explains why I'm not seeing 55,000.
I got bootlegged, unaudited numbers.
Okay.
That's, that's to the point. We are making the same point with different, with different language. Doctor and doctor, thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Board, it's 10:45. We will pivot now after that rich conversation. This presentation is a presentation on the executive budget proposal, to review the Governor's state school aid and Michigan Department of Education budget recommendations, and how the proposed budget aligns with strategic plan goals. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required on the presentation itself. We welcome our presenters, Mr. Kyle Garant, Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations, and Mr. Spencer Simmons, Director of the Office of Financial Management. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Gentlemen, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning.
Thank you. And thank you, Board, for having us back this month to share a little bit more information about the Governor's proposed FY23 budget, as well as an update on the SARS fund. So, as you may recall, the same week as, or at the board meeting last month, the Governor presented her FY22, FY23 executive budget recommendation in the legislature on February 9. The education budget would provide approximately $4.5 billion in additional funds to support public school children in Michigan. It is a generational budget. The amount of resources that are contained in that budget is something that most of us will not see again in our lifetimes. Dr. Rice has shared that numerous times as we talked about the budget. It is a historic budget. The Governor's budget supports and aligns with all of the goals of the Michigan Top Ten GGE Education Plan, include many recommendations put forward by the department and other educational leaders in our state. Dr. Rice, Mr. Simmons, and I presented twice on February 24 to our Appropriations Subcommittee, so the subcommittees that will deal directly with not only the school aid budget, but the department budget as well, to present the Governor's budget proposals. We focus specifically, more specifically, on the department budget, while our partners at SBO, the State Budget Office, primarily handle the duties on, on the K-12 budget. Last week, both, both subcommittees introduced shell bills, or what's deemed shell bills, House Bill 5781 for school aid, and Senate Bill 832 for the department budget. House Bill 5781 for school aid and Senate Bill 832 for the department budget. These will be the bill numbers that will be used as the legislative process moves forward out of subcommittees with proposals for both budgets. As I mentioned earlier, while the budget recommendation impacts all of our goals, obviously it most closely aligns with providing adequate and equitable school funding for districts. And I think it's important to note that, how that budget plays with, with the top 10 goals. So the two resource upstream goals, both the human capital portion of Goal 7 and addressing teacher shortage, as well as the strictly speaking funding goal, Goal A, help drive all other goals in the Strategic Education Plan. While the two developmental upstream goals, Goals 1 and Goals 2, addressing the expansion of early childhood and the improvement of early literacy, as well as health, safety, and wellness in Goal 3, help drive all our other downstream goals or some of the outcome goals that, again, Dr. Kennaschnig and Dr. Chapman presented on, on Goal 5 just now, as well as Goal 4 and Goal 6 respectively. So we are all cognizant of the shortage of teachers and other certified staff members and support staff members in our schools. We've talked about the shortage continually here at the board table recently. The issue is critical, and we need to produce and retain more teachers, and we need to support, we need the support of our legislature to do so immediately. We believe that supporting currently serving teachers through increased pay, lower class sizes, and other supports like mentorship, opportunities for greater voice in school and district decisions, and retention bonuses will help to retain teachers in this hugely impactful profession. The governor's proposals for $1.7 billion to support educator retention, 1.5 billion of that to support retention bonuses for existing, for all existing pre-K-12 educators and support staff is, is extremely important. Teachers and other certified staff are eligible for payments of up to $11,000 over the course of four years. The governor's proposing that the payments begin in this year, this fall, and continue for three following years. Teachers and other certified staff would be eligible for a $2,000 bonus in Year 1 and 2, and that increases to $3,000 in Year 3 and $4,000 in Year 4, as well as administrators, paraprofessionals, and non-instructional staff are also eligible for retention bonuses in Years 1 and 2 with $2,000 each of those two years. Grow Your Own Programs for support staff members interested in becoming teachers, as well as students currently considering teaching as a career, are critical aspects to strengthening and diversifying the teacher shortage, as are student-teacher supports. Tuition support for teacher candidates is a necessary component of our effort to rebuild the teaching profession in the current labor market. The governor's proposing $600 million to support this effort and is, and is essentially sprinkled amongst those, those varying initiatives there, ranging, again, from support from mentoring to fellowships to, again, Grow Your Own Programs. So another key component of her retention program, retention proposal that the department helped create, you know, the governor's, both retention and recruitment proposals, included efforts developed here within MDE. Given that urgency of the shortage, while it may be a balmy 31 degrees outside here in Lansing, spring is only 12 days away, as Dr. Rice continues to remind us. And the sooner that we can have action legislatively on these retention and recruitment bonuses, retention recruitment efforts, excuse me, the sooner that those efforts can be developed and implemented at the local level. Our goal and our hope is that the legislature acts now and outside of the, outside of the fiscal year '23 budget process and passes a supplemental that includes some of this funding in order for school districts to have the opportunity to, to implement programs locally and ultimately, you know, drive change for, for students in the classroom and have more teachers to support our students in schools. We'd also like to thank Senator McGroom, we have partnered with to introduce Senate Bill 861, to make it easier for teachers with out-of-state certification to become certified here in Michigan. Each of the last five years, we've certified over 1,000 teachers originally certified in another state. That said, we think we can improve upon these numbers with a statutory change to minimize regulatory requirements. Speaking directly to Goal A now, the governor's education budget, or the school aid budget proposes the support of $980 million additionally, proposed investment not only to meet the needs of all students with a $580 million increase in the per pupil foundation, bringing it to $9,135, but also including additional $408 million to continue building a weighted funding model to support the educational needs of students who need additional supports. Another important initiative in the governor's, excuse me, executive recommendation is one, a $1 billion infrastructure modernization fund. This fund would support communities that cannot support a school bond or sinking fund to improve the educational infrastructure in which students learn, including improvement in air and water quality. This $1 billion infrastructure modernization fund proposes to upgrade and make more safety environments in which students learn is a welcome and long overdue investment.
Thanks, Kyle. For Goal Number 3, to improve health and safety and wellness of students, is supported by the recommended $361 million. $361 million is composed of multiple lines. $150 million to expand trails programs. $120 million to hire additional mental health professionals and counselors in schools. $50 million to increase appropriations for intermediate districts for the provision of mental health and support services. $25 million to make mental health screening tools available to all districts. $11 million to open an estimated 40 new school-based health clinics and serve an estimated 20,000 additional students, ages 5 to 21. $5 million for a new program to provide school-based mental health personnel access, professional development, and same-day consultation with behavioral health clinicians to respond to complex student mental health needs. Continuation of Goal Number 3, $66 million to support school safeties composed of the lines listed. $50 million for school safety grants. $1 million to purchase technology equipment, upgrading hardening measures, hiring school resource officers, and conducting school building safety assessments. $15 million to pilot cross-system intervention approach to identify and support middle and high school students who potentially pose a risk of committing acts of violence. $50 million for the school, for the before and after-school programs. These programs provide safe places for students outside of school hours and give them expanded opportunities to help with unfinished learning. Goal Number 2, to improve early literacy, is supported by $94.4 million. That is composed of the Detroit Public Schools Community District to fulfill the Garrett B versus Whitmer settlement. For Goal Number 1, to expand early childhood education, is supported by $72.6 million to expand early childhood education for pre-education, for pre-K education programs, including increases in early on and home visitation and early childhood collaboratives. Within the MDE budget, to address the teacher shortage in administration, there's $800,000 in general funding dollars to support four FTEs, to support the programs in the school aid budget, and to recruit and retain educators. The early childhood programs expansion for administration, there's $700,000 in general fund dollars to support six FTEs. Two of those FTEs are funded with federal childcare funding. Two of the positions in, from GF are supported, are, are to support the Great Start Readiness Program expansion. One position for home visitation staff support, and one financial support staff for early childhood programming. $200,000 in general fund dollars is to support wraparound services for one FTE to support training or technical assistance. Mental health funding. The Michigan School of the Deaf, there's $3 million is proposed to increase general funds to provide the necessary coordination, staff support, and training to improve student outcomes. And the local school board member training, $260,000 in general funds to provide training for school board members on topics such as conflicts of interest, labor relations, education, law, school finance, and board governance.
Thank you, Spencer. We're going to transition quickly to the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. As you may remember, Board, we discussed this briefly at the December board meeting, resharing the list of 20 allowable use fund categories that school districts are allowed to use their SIR allocations, both 1, 2, and 3, to support the needs of their students and community. And these first six, you know, it's primarily highlighted by allowing districts to spend resources on any previously authorized educational, federal education law and appropriations, so ranging from the Ever Students in Seas Act to IDEA, Adult Education and Familiarity Act, districts could, any, any allowable activity that's allowed in those funding streams, districts could spend their SIR monies on as well. For the items 7 through 11, you know, 9 through 11 specifically are, are essentially allowing districts the opportunity to spend resources on COVID-19 preparedness and response activities, whether it be training or, or actual purchase of, of supplies for the school. Just highlight, like to highlight items number 13 and 14 on this slide, the purchase of educational technology, as well as providing mental health and services and supports. As you may recall, Board, the department created with its CARES Act SIR 1 allocation, the Educational Equity Fund, that was a competitive fund for high-needs districts in our state to support those two specifically. That was a $37 million fund with the breakdown approximately being a little over $7 million that districts applied for, for mental health supports, and the remaining money, $30,000, going towards the purchase of educational technology, which, if you recall, in the early on phases of, of COVID, when we had so many students in schools providing education remotely, the purchase of educational technology was, was critical at that time. And then finally, in these last five, I'd just like to highlight items number 18 and 19, when we deal with school facility repairs to mitigate COVID-19 exposure, specifically with HVAC, modernization, replacement, diagnostics, you know, dealing with air and water quality is something that, that's actually, bullet number 18 was not in the first CARES Act SIR 1, it wasn't called out specifically, although the feds said it was allowable. So as SIR 2 and SIR 3 came along, the federal government and Congress was specific to call out those expenditures as allowable with the, with these dollars. And here, just a quick reminder about the SIR spending deadlines. So CARES Act SIR 1 for the $4 million, that ends September 30th of 2022. CRESTER SIR 2, September 30th of 2023. And ARP SIR 3, September 30th of 2024. As we approach these end dates, districts will not only report how they spent those monies to MDE that were allocated to them, but they will also conduct local audits as part of the district's annual single audit that will be submitted and reviewed by MDE. So these dollars will be audited and reviewed to ensure that districts spent them in line with what the federal law allowed them to do so. And those audits are submitted to MDE, and we anticipate being able to share additional information and being back in front of the board to share more detailed information about the use of these dollars as we approach, again, those end dates and have more financial information about how districts use those dollars to support their students and communities. And with that, we'll turn it back over to Dr. Rice, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garant, Mr. Simmons, for that important report, we appreciate that. Board members, questions or comments? Looking around, Dr. Pugh.
Just a quick question around the audits. How does that, how do we expect those to come in?
So every, every year, a district has to have a single audit about their, how they spend all their money. And so given that these are large federal resources, those audits are, you know, this will be a, a section of resources that will be looked at by local CPA firms and others that districts contract with to do their single audit. State statute requires that districts submit those to us by November 1st of each year now. And so we, they come in throughout the course of the year, you know, some districts will have them done and turned into us by August, you know, after their fiscal year ends, others will, we will have to remind on October 30th to, that the deadline's approaching, so. But it's, it's part of their normal auditing procedure, these funds will just be part of that audit now.
Okay, so it'll be all three tranches of funds, and they've received, all the funds have been dispersed for the federal funding?
So all the dollars have been allocated, as you may remember, for federal dollars, they're reimbursement-based, right? And so districts have to spend locally before they can seek reimbursement from us. They're required to have an approved application that aligns with, again, those 20 allowable activities. And so districts have, you know, applied for, and we've reviewed and, and approved, and in some cases had to send back modifications because they proposed to use resources that were outside, or outside that didn't align with the 20 use categories. So it becomes a, a process over time, but yes, all the money has been allocated to districts, and they're in the process of applying for those and being awarded.
Can I just ask one?
Please.
And so the reimbursements, because that was, that has been brought up, have any of the districts expressed issue with being able to address issues and not having the upfront dollars to then be reimbursed? Were there some districts that, that were better poised than, than other districts to do that?
Sure, sure. We have not had those concerns voiced to us yet. As we get into SIR 3, there, that, that may be more of a concern, especially as districts use those resources to address big-ticket items like HVAC systems that, you know, have an upfront cost that's more costly to districts. Plus, SIR 3 had such a large allocation, so when you look at, you know, SIR 1 and 2, it's a, it's, it's a little bit more manageable for districts to have, but when you have $3.5 billion in SIR 3, especially districts that have the larger allocations, it could become a concern for capital projects, but we have not heard that voice from individual districts or from our partners at the school business officials either.
And maybe it was related to that. I'll have more other questions, but I'll pause.
Okay, very good, thank you. Other, other questions or comments? Dr. Pritch?
Thank you. Slide 8, where you referenced support staff, and I think maybe you answered this during the presentation. What is our definition of support staff at this point? Staff just within the school building? You know, would that include food service staff? Are we including transportation? That's, that's really where my question lies.
Sure, I'm just trying to bring it back up, but, um, for people to see. So the, the governor's proposal, it really, I think the delineation is instructional versus non-instructional staff. And so any non-instructional staff there in the, in the building would be eligible for, for those payments. So again, the, the State Budget Office has put out, I think we've shared this with the board too, kind of a white paper on what they envision those proposals to do, or to look like. But as the legislative process plays out, and the legislature and the Subcommittee Appropriations Committee, excuse me, start drafting, like it, that, I think will become a little more clear in terms of who's in which bucket.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritch, Mr. Garant, Mr. McMillan.
Mr. Garant, so the, on page 4 and 5, or on slide 8 and 9, the teacher retention, teacher shortage, educator recruitment, so $1.7 billion and then 600 million, so that's like $2.3 billion for addressing teacher shortage and, and recruitment? Okay, I mean, I, I don't quite understand, this body here, or at least the Democrats on the board, voted back in January, two months ago, to, to call for 300 to 500 million over five years, so even using the large to five hundred million over five years, so even using the larger number, for increased recruitment and retention of educators. So that's, even using the five hundred million over five years, a hundred million a year. Now they're looking at twenty-three times that amount, when at least this body said a hundred million a year would be adequate for increases in recruitment and retention. So I, I don't quite understand why there has to be twenty-three times as much as what, what this body at least called for as being adequate. I also, Kyle, is there any money in here for, you know, when parents wanted to understand, you know, what, what level of CRT is being taught in the Grand Rapids area, they were told four hundred thousand dollars for a FOIA. Is there any money here to offset that kind of thing, or, or money for transparency for parents to kind of encourage and offset any costs, so that parents can know what is being taught in the classrooms? I mean, state law says that they are supposed to be, the, the, the school, government school is supposed to, is required to let parents review the curriculum, textbooks, and teaching materials of the school in which the pupil is enrolled at a reasonable time and place, and in a reasonable manner. I mean, it doesn't even say they're supposed to charge them. I think state law requires it, so they shouldn't be charging them. But, you know, these outrageous attempts to stop parents from knowing what's going on in the classroom, I was just hoping there'd be something here in the budget that would, you know, at least be allocated towards parents and parents' efforts. I don't, is there any in there?
There is not, and not specifically to supporting parents for, for FOIA. The FOIA law has provisions that allow entities to charge costs for preparing the information that's being asked for, but there are not resources in this budget to support parents to do that. Circling back to your goal seven, question around the differentiation between what the governors proposed versus what the Board and the department had proposed in terms of initial investment. Our initial investment did not include retention bonuses for teachers. And so that's one point five billion dollars worth of that money that was not part of the ask or part of the retention efforts that we proposed initially, but it underscores the importance.
It wasn't viewed as being required or desired back two months ago, but now, I guess it is.
I think, I think it's a large investment underscores the importance of needing to retain the excellent teachers we have in our state.
Well, and to that point, so our recommendations were primarily on the recruitment side.
Consider retention, recruitment and retention?
If I could.
In the resolution.
If I could. You asked a question, I'd like to respond to it.
I'm just correcting your falsehood.
I appreciate that. If you could let me finish before you corrected me, that would be special. So the, our recommendation, three hundred to five hundred million dollars over five years, were primarily, not exclusively, on the recruitment side. And the governor accepted many of those recommendations. The notion of grow your own, support staff to teachers, grow your own students to teachers, the notion of regional approaches to the teacher pipeline issue, the notion of fellowships for young people who are in college, who are pursuing careers in, in education. But the governor added to, to the many ideas that she accepted that had been initially incubated in the department. She added, for example, the efforts to recruit other certificated staff who were not teachers. So, for example, guidance counselors, for example, nurses, for example, school social workers, school psychologists. She leaned in, in that space, and we thought that that made sense. In addition, she added, as you point out, and as Mr. Grant pointed out, a substantial investment or proposed investment in retention bonuses. We think that that makes a lot of sense. So that explains the differences between, there's a lot of overlap, but there are additions as, as well in her, in her proposal, which we support.
Just one follow-up.
Please.
Kyle, on the five point five billion dollars that we, the state received and districts received, I've been asking, you know, how much of that went towards teacher recruitment and retention? Or actually, a lot of, I, I speak in front of various parent groups, and they've been asking how that money's been spent. They're getting no, no answers from the local districts. Is there any, is there going to be some type of accounting of that five point five billion at some point? And how much of it did go towards teacher recruitment and retention?
Sure. As I, as I mentioned earlier, Mr. McMillan, as, as the end of the fiscal year, as the end of the spending period, those dollars comes to pass, we will have more information to share with the Board about how those dollars are actually used. You referenced the overall five point five billion dollars, which is all of the S R allocations combined, the largest of which in ARP S R three has a spending arc of till September thirtieth of 2024. Districts are, again, continuing to apply for those dollars, many of which are a large number, just submitted at their final application to us on February fifteenth. So the notion of how those dollars are used, or how they will be used, I think will look different over time, especially with S R three, as districts start to spend those monies.
And they use it for retention and recruitment?
Yes, they can.
So they, they could use that five point five billion for it, and yet we're putting more in. Okay, got it.
Well, I could just add to that, Tom, Mr. McMillan, excuse me, that on the mental health side of things, you know, districts had originally budgeted to use some of the S R dollars for mental health support services. And then during the appropriation cycle last year, there was significant money added in section thirty-one oh, a hundred and twenty-one million dollars, additional money added to thirty-one N, both of which could be used for mental health support services. So districts then revised their application because they had another funding source to be able to support those efforts and adjust other needs with their federal dollars, so.
So to, to add to that response, because you noted that initially, there were fifteen allowable uses of these funds in S R one, in CARES Act S R one. And subsequently, there was an amendment thereof, as we moved into CRESA, S R two, and ARP S R three, to permit five other uses. Now, one could argue, in fact, you made the point, that those other uses were there, but they were implied, they weren't explicit, and they've become explicit in the guidance around CARES Act, and then subsequently in, in the language around CRESA and, and ARP. Congress knew that these were generational dollars, and they knew that it was going to take a period of time to spend them, and wanted not quick spending, but smart spending. So to that point, if you want to go and buy masks for mitigation strategies, or disinfectant, or, or, those are pretty quick purchases, for the most part. The replacement of a heating and ventilation system to modernize it, and to make it a heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system, to take an HV system to an HVAC system, used to take twelve to fourteen months in the, in the state. You know, you would be planning for one summer as you were implementing, or as you were effectuating in another summer. This is now a longer amount of time. You know, you're not taking twelve to fourteen months, you can talk eighteen months for the replacement of an HVAC system. And these are, these are generational dollars. They need to be spent for generational purposes to really take these buildings, many of which are extraordinarily old and outdated, and update them, and improve upon them. This is what Congress envisioned, in part, not solely, because there are twenty categories, of course, but in part. So some of this spending can take place very, very quickly. Some of this spending is going to have to take place over a period of years, and Congress envisioned, envisioned that. Ms. Snyder?
Can you FOIA the November first audits?
Yeah, they're, they're actually, they're posted, all the individual district audits are required to be posted on district websites.
And I would encourage people, if they have an interest, I would encourage you to look those, look up those, those audits. And if for some reason you cannot find them on a website, that's fine, then, then, then ask. That should be given to you as a matter of course. There's no question about it. Those are the audited financials of a, of an audited public school district. They are required to be given up by, by law. Other, other questions? Dr. Pugh, to you.
And Dr. Rice, you, you touched upon one of the pieces that I wanted to talk about, and that's the HVAC systems, and making these buildings safe. And we had a report out by M D Q that talked about the age of some of these HVAC systems, the fact that many of the, some of the buildings have no HVAC system, and then really just making sure that while Congress may have known that it would take time to do these things right, a lot of locals, a lot of just of us don't understand the time that it takes to do that type of work the right way. We talked the last time when we had this conversation about, many of us were hoping that, that some of this funding would be within an infrastructure package as well, and it, it did not. It was not. You know, we got some lead funding that I think came, pipe replacement maybe funding, but not anything to address some of the buildings, and maybe even replacing some of these old buildings. So really, I think, Dr. Rice, to your point, making sure that we say that as much as we can around the time, the shortage of expertise in this area, as well as you, you continue to hear people talk about the shortage of supply to be able to replace this. So again, for it to be done the right way. I do also want to say that I think we have to be careful when we talk about parents and what parents want, because I'm talking about parents. We had eleven hundred responses from parents, I think it was the last meeting, singing the praises of this Board for speaking up about issues such as teaching adequate and accurate history. And so, you know, as we throw that term around, that, that we're talking for parents and what parents want, I think we should be careful with that.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Other, other reflections on this presentation? Ellen Lipton, I, I can see you in two places. I can see you straight, and I can see you to the side. Ms. Lipton?
I do apologize for that. I just would like to, again, thank Dr., Mr. Grant, Dr. Grant. I'm, I'm not sure, I apologize if I don't have the correct title. But.
He's not complaining.
So for that presentation, I think that oftentimes in the discussion of numbers, the, the human component behind those numbers is sometimes missed. And I just would like to encourage all of us to put our own, you know, sort of mental meat on the bones as they've been expressed to us. Given that we just came out of a wonderful conversation about post-secondary success, I would just like to focus, when we talk about the ability of districts to hire not just more teachers, which of course is important, but other personnel. When, and we talk about parental involvement, again, through my experience with the dozen or so promise zones in some of our most economically distressed communities around the state, what parents want is what I think collectively we all want for our children, to have a school that is safe, a place where a student can learn and grow, and, and dream of where they want to go and do after they leave the K-12 framework. And those desires and wants of what collectively all of our parents want is, oftentimes, must be reduced to dollars. So for example, if my dream is to reduce the ratio of guidance counselors who are integral in helping a student develop what their post-secondary plan will be, if I'm currently operating in our promise zone schools where that student-guidance-counselor ratio is hovering one to seven hundred, and I know that best practices suggest that I need to lower that ratio to somewhere more one to two fifty, or something, then it's really mathematics to be able to fill those positions with qualified guidance counselors, and what those will cost. So each of those buckets of money represent, in many cases, the desire of families in a school district to have more people available in the schools to help our children move successfully through elementary, middle, and high school, and on to their post-secondary plan, whatever that plan should be.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. I appreciate you pointing out the issue of, of student counselor ratios. I think it's an important one. Having lived that for many years myself, I know it to be an important, an important piece. Mr. Grant began the presentation that he and Mr. Simmons shared with the notion that this is a generational budget. It is. It's a budget the likes of which those of us who have been in public education for many decades have never seen, and are likely not to see again. It's a budget that is not a one-year budget. It's a budget that in a number of cases stretches over a period of years. The recruitment and retention initiatives stretch over four years, for example. The infrastructure modernization fund stretches over six years. The billion dollars for infrastructure improvements stretches over six years. There are a number of elements in this budget that are meant to affect us for a period of years. And then there are those that are one-time, one-time. That's the way I would describe that. That is to say, there are one-time uses of funds for a single year, as opposed to one-time uses of funds for a period of years. This is a budget that advances not simply the School Finance Research Collaborative recommendations regarding base funding, number one, regarding weighted funding for children who have greater needs, and therefore deserve greater resources for their education, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, English learners, CTE students, rural and isolated students. But in addition to supporting SFRC recommendations and pushing that eighth goal of the state's top ten state strategic education plan, it supports every goal of the state's top ten state strategic education plan. And to Ms. Lipton's example about how improvement of the student-guidance-counselor ratios can help improve graduation rates with better guidance of young people in high school, I would argue that this budget supports every one of those goal areas, and helps us move children forward in every one of those goal areas. It's not a single-year budget. It's not analogous to a typical year budget. There's no way to compare it properly to a single-year budget. It is so, so extraordinary and so generational in that, in that regard. So I just, I just share that with you because it's, it's one thing to talk about working toward School Finance Research Collaborative recommendations. It's one thing to talk about addressing the recruitment and retention issues, not simply with teachers, but other certificated staff, and now with support staff. It's another thing to propose a budget that helps us get there. And I think this budget really, really does that in an extraordinary way. So, Board, the time is now eleven twenty-seven. A quorum of the Board is present, regular meeting is engaged. Next item on the agenda is resolution supporting Governor Gretchen Whitmer's fiscal year 2022, 2023 state budget executive recommendations. We have a resolution that was placed on the, on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. Mr. Ackley, would you please read the resolution?
It'd be my pleasure. And if someone wants to give me an honorary doctor, that's, I'm cool with that, too.
Please move forward, Dr. Ackley. Please move forward, Dr. Ackley.
I think the members have it all in front of them. Resolution supporting Governor Gretchen Whitmer's fiscal year 2023, 22, 23 state budget executive recommendation. Whereas Governor Gretchen Whitmer unveiled her executive budget recommendation on February 9, 2022, a generational budget that would make historic investments in public education in Michigan. And whereas the governor's budget recommendation would help advance every goal of the state's top 10 strategic education plan, and in doing so, would improve the lives of Michigan's more than 1.4 million public school children. And whereas the governor's budget recommendation, consistent with the direction of the School Finance Research Collaborative recommendations, includes a 5% increase from $8,700 per pupil to $9,135 per pupil in the foundation allowance to school districts, and categorical increases to support students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, English learners, rural and isolated students, and career and technical education students. And whereas the governor's budget recommendation promotes a $1.7 billion investment in retention programs, which includes $1.5 billion for bonuses to educators and support staff who agree to continue working in their school districts over the next four years, $50 million annually for teacher onboarding and mentoring programs, and $75 million for innovative, $75 million for innovative approaches to addressing regional educator needs. And whereas the governor's budget recommendation includes a $600 million proposed investment to teacher recruitment initiatives, including Grow Your Own programs for support staff to become teachers and for students to become teachers, fellowships for aspiring teachers and student-teacher stipends. And whereas the governor's budget recommendation has an investment of over $360 million in school-based mental and physical health supports and the creation of a $1 billion school infrastructure fund to be expended over a six-year period of time to address physical and physical plant needs, including air and water quality, in communities that have higher concentrations of students who are economically disadvantaged or have limited capacity to raise funds for capital projects given their taxable value. And whereas the governor's budget recommendation includes $72.6 million to continue the expansion of the Great Start Readiness Program and to increase early-on home visitations and Great Start Collaboratives. Now therefore be it resolved that the State Board of Education strongly supports Governor Whitmer's fiscal year 2022, 2023 executive budget recommendation for pre-K-12 education in Michigan, and be it further resolved that the State Board of Education encourages the Michigan Legislature to move quickly to pass a supplemental budget bill that includes the recruitment and retention recommendations by the beginning of spring 2022 to provide local school districts with the time to begin to implement these efforts to affect the educator and support staff supply for next school year.
So we have a, we moved and seconded this, actually, I beg your pardon, we moved and seconded it to put it on the agenda. If we could, we could have a motion. Could we move that, please?
I move that the State Board of Education adopt the resolution supporting Governor Gretchen Whitmer's fiscal year 23 state budget executive recommendation as discussed during the State Board of Education meeting on March 8.
Okay, thank you. Moved by President Albrecht, supported by Dr. Pritchett. We have a motion, we have a second. President Albrecht, to you.
So thank you, and thank you to the Legislative Committee for working on this and providing it for the State Board of Education's review and vote. I just wanted to, to say that I, I support this resolution mostly because for years, you know, we've, we've heard that if only we had the funds to address and then fill in the blank, whether that's children's mental health, whether that's infrastructure, which we all know under Proposal A does not address infrastructure needs of many schools in this, this state. Now it's teacher retention and supporting teachers that are in the classroom now, as well as trying to bring new individuals into the teaching profession. And it's an increase across the board of the foundation allowance, which provides discretionary dollars for schools to spend as they need without it being earmarked or tied, tie-barred to specific issues and, and suggestions from the state. So I think while there will still be challenges, you know, not having the funds will be less of a challenge moving forward. And so I think that this is, this is a worthy resolution to support. Thank you.
Thank you, President Albrecht. Any other comments before we vote? Dr. Pugh?
And just in support of, and kind of just driving home some of the statements that President Albrecht brought home, I, you know, I'm tickled pink over the funding for the infrastructure. And this is something that those of us, it's education world, environmental health world, teachers have known for a long time that our infrastructure needs to have the adequate funding to be able to be able to address some of the issues that we've long known impact the academic outcomes of our children and, and definitely have been exacerbated and highlighted during this world pandemic. And so this bold step, I, I, you know, couldn't be more happy to see. And again, at a time when we thought we would have some additional federal dollars, this helps us to do some of the things that we need to do in those school buildings. And then of course, those of us who have seen health clinics in school buildings, we've been able to see how that impacts, positively impacts the health and wellbeing, the attendance rates of our children. So I too am happy to see this budget and agree with you, Dr. Rice, that this needs to be moved as expeditiously as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Other Board members on the budget. Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate on the timeliness issue, though September seems like a long ways away, it is not in a school right now. There is scheduling taking place, there is staffing taking place as we speak with administrators. And without them knowing what resources they may have to work with, it's very difficult to make decisions. You can make a decision, but you, you can't act upon it. So again, I just wanted to, to help reiterate that part of the resolution on the timeliness issue.
I appreciate that. And that's mostly, that's most important when it comes to the issue of the recruitment and retention initiatives. We need the five months between the beginning of spring, the beginning of the school year to begin to sink these efforts into the soil of local communities across the state. We've talked with the Legislature over a period of months. They need to act in some way, shape, or form on this, on this initiative, on the set of initiatives. And it's important that we not start flat-footed on this in the, in the summer. Very, very important. Thank you for sharing that. Other Board members going once, twice? Mr. McMillan?
I feel compelled to vote no on this resolution because of the continued politicization of the classrooms, particularly with the increased implementation of the divisive CR, Critical Race Theory, which at least one of the largest school district superintendents admitted that they are doing, with the increased hostility towards parents by many local school boards and districts as far as, you know, how they are treated at board meetings, the requests for transparency and the outrageous FOIA costs, the, just the effort to hide how money is being spent, no accounting for the federal $5.5 billion spent. I'm a CPA, a CPA audit is not going to show. It shows general, overall, it's not going to say this is the money and this is how it was spent. And so there, you know, and it's been admitted that many of the things in this resolution could have been spent, could have been paid for by the 5.5 billion that was given to us by the federal government. And just the, the way that parents, again, wanting to stop the unnecessary and harmful masking of their kids, it just, it's, a lot of, the concerns have fallen on deaf ears, so I just feel that I cannot support this resolution.
Fair enough. Thank you so much. Other Board members? Other Board members going once and twice? Dr. Pugh?
Dr. Rice, and I know that I'm not supposed to do this, but we have media here and I often get concerned with the soundbites that go out. And again, I will say that there are parents who are expecting us, appreciative of us, of protecting their children and have definitely spoken out about this. And so again, back to the issue at hand, I'm happy to see that the governor has put forward a budget that speaks to the issue, the concerns that are on so many parents' minds, as well as our teachers.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Pugh. At this time, we, we ask if anybody from the public would, would like to speak to us. There are not too many people who are per se of the public at the moment here. We have some members of the media, we have some staff members, but I will make the call hearing and seeing none. If we could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Strayhorn absent. Tilly?
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is Presentation on the Status of Educator Preparation Providers in Michigan. This presentation is an update on the status of educator, educator preparation providers in the state and an overview of the approval process. This is an informational presentation, no board action is required. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent of the Division of Educator, Student, and School Support, Ms. Leah Breen, Director of the Office of Educator Excellence. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome. And Dr. Chapman, welcome back.
Thanks, Dr. Rice, and good morning again, Board. Director Breen has joined us and she will share with us the status of educator preparation providers in Michigan, and we will have some discussion thereon. Director Breen?
Thank you. Starting at the beginning, what are educator preparation providers and what do they do? Educator preparation providers are approved by the Michigan Department of Education or the State Board of Education to prepare and recommend educators for credentials. Typically, you'll hear us use the word certificates, but we in fact have several credential types. Those educator preparation providers may be institutions of higher education, educational organizations, nonprofit companies, for-profit companies, and local education agencies. It's also important to note that this presentation is about the providers, credentials, and special programs that are issued and approved only by the Office of Educator Excellence, for which I am the director. And we shouldn't forget that our other programs within MDE may also have credentials, such as our colleagues in early childhood, as one example. So the types of Michigan credentials that we issue out of the Office of Educator Excellence are established in law and rule. They include the certificate or credential types that are on the left, mostly certificates, a couple licenses in there for school counselors and school social workers. Plus, we have 19 preliminary, temporary, and substitute credentials that allow individuals to either grow into a program or serve on a limited basis in a role within the school district. We have 31 unique traditional preparation providers. They offer the types of programs that are listed up there, pretty much the whole gamut, teachers, school administrators, school social workers, school counselors, school nurses, school psychologists, and teacher leaders. We also have 13 unique alternative route preparation providers that offer programs for teachers and administrators. Just briefly, here's the list of approved traditional preparation providers in the state. I'd love to be just a second to look through that. It is on three slides. And then the list of 13 approved alternative route preparation providers. Alternative route does not necessarily mean non-college or university. Some of these programs, for example, seven, eight, nine, 10, are associated with a college and a university, some are not. The bottom three in the circle are exclusively school administrator preparation programs. We also have four other unique approved educator preparation providers in Michigan. They are listed here. These providers issue or maintain programs that lead to either teacher leader designation, which allows them to attain or advance professional certification, or adds a school administrator enhancement to an educator certificate or a school administrator's certificate. So overall, we have a total of 48 approved unique preparation providers in Michigan. So what is the approval process to become a new preparation provider? It's designed, it's fundamentally important to note that it's designed to ensure the success and longevity of the provider. And this is necessary to ensure that candidates can complete and exit a program that is successful and maintains its success long enough for them to complete the program and exit. Approval is a four-step process. It has an application, an initial approval process, a full approval, and then national accreditation for our traditional and alternative route programs only. We're going to take a brief look at each of these phases. So the application process itself lasts from one to three years. The state law grants the authority to the state superintendent of public instruction to establish the provider requirements, in addition to those identified by law, and to develop the process for approval of new providers. State law grants the State Board of Education the authority to approve or deny traditional route providers recommended by the state superintendent. And state law grants the state superintendent the authority to approve alternative route providers that meet the established requirements and complete the application process. While there are organizations that have an interest in applying to become an approved EPP in Michigan, given the current moratorium on providers, we do not have any pending applications. The initial approval process lasts at least five years. During this phase, providers begin enrolling candidates, begin implementing their programs, and are gathering key assessment data necessary for national accreditation. Programs that are in the initial approval phase very often need considerable support from the Michigan Department of Education. To achieve full approval, providers must demonstrate through the data gathered in their quality assurance system that they've been successful in meeting their targets for successful educator preparation. Some examples of targets provider have used are high MTTC pass rates, employer satisfaction as measured by surveys, strong growth data on students taught by graduates as compared to data from students taught by graduates of other programs, and high percentages of graduates from historically underrepresented populations. To date, all 31 traditional preparation providers have full approval. Five of 13 of our alternative preparation providers have full approval. National accreditation is the last phase. 28 traditional providers have earned national accreditation. Zero alternative route providers have earned national accreditation. That's due to the recency of their full approval and the length of time that they have actually been approved as a provider. So the national accreditation process requires technical assistance to the providers, onsite visits with the accrediting body, report writing, contribution and review, and program guidance addressing any required stipulations to remain accredited. So a question we often hear is, does the number of providers affect the number of teachers? And the answer to that is not necessarily. Take a brief look at teacher production and teacher preparation providers over time. So interest in the quality of teacher preparation and a belief that there was oversaturation in the field left the State Board of Education, sorry, pardon me, led the State Board of Education to limit the expansion of traditional teacher preparation providers beginning in 2005. Since 2005, nine traditional route providers have closed entirely or ceased their teacher preparation programs. In 2009, state law established alternative route providers in Michigan. Since then, 13 alternative route programs for teacher preparation have been approved and three have closed. And as a reminder, we also have three approved And as a reminder, we also have three approved operational alternative route programs for school administrators. It is also a great deal of effort on behalf of MDE to assist with a provider's closure. As part of that responsibility, we ensure that each candidate can successfully transition to a different program or that the specific content areas of the program can remain open until all candidates attain certification. So this chart demonstrates teacher enrollment and completers versus the number of approved traditional and alternative route providers over about the last 10 years. Note that this is only teachers, so not all of our educators, solely teacher production. And looking at this chart in general, you can see that over time, for every traditional route program that closed, a new alternative route opened, and for every alternative route program that closed, a new one opened. Simultaneously, you can see that the total number of enrollers and completers started at 23,000 and pretty steadily decreased until about 27,000, where we start seeing an increase again. So number of providers is essentially the same, and enrolling and completers kind of taking a dip and then is on its way back on the upswing. While we're not sure if more preparation programs does or does not result in more teachers, we know that it could result in reduced quality and reduced retention of teachers, particularly without adequate technical assistance and monitoring resources with MDE to provide support. According to a 2019 study, Getting Selective on Teacher Training, many top-performing education systems limit the number of teacher training options to a few high-quality programs so they can invest in preparing individuals who will stay in the profession for a substantial career rather than leave the profession quickly because they aren't prepared well. And this speaks to the earlier conversation about both the need for recruitment and retention in Michigan. All of this brings us to the reason we are here today, which is to discuss the status of new educator-preparation providers moving forward. In 2019, the State Board of Education passed this resolution that extended the moratorium for both traditional educator-preparation institutions and alternative route providers through April 30, 2022. It also provided the authority and flexibility for the State Superintendent to review and approve high-need programs through that duration. Based on that flexibility, the State Superintendent issued a request for proposals in January 2020, and subsequently, two new alternative route providers were approved. One was in January of 2021, and one was in, pardon me, yes, January of 2021 and May of 2021. We have discussed both of these providers with the Board previous to today, but just as a reminder, the first was Detroit Public Schools Community Districts On the Rise Academy. It's an alternative route program, supporting aspiring teachers with an emphasis on those that were already employed by DPS CD. And you can see the enrollment numbers there. The second was New Paradigm for Education Alternative Route Program, focused on increasing the diversity of Michigan's educator workforce, particularly in the greater Detroit area, with the goal of reflecting more closely the diversity of public school students. It is a residency-based program, and you can see the enrollment numbers there. So as we noted, the current resolution expires April 30, 2022. And though there isn't evidence to support that more providers equals more teachers, it is nonetheless important to leave the window open for the necessity to meet needs during a time of shortage. The current resolution allows the SPI to consider new providers and limits the requirement to review all prospective applicants, allowing for better resource allocation. And so there are two points for discussion for the Board today. That is that the State Superintendent will continue to review and consider approval for alternative route preparation programs focused on meeting identified high needs. And the State Board of Education is asked to consider the expiration of the current resolution scheduled at the end of April and determine whether to extend the authority for the State Superintendent to review and recommend traditional preparation programs focused on meeting identified high needs for a specified period of time. It is our intent to bring this conversation back in March. Thank you.
In April.
Oh, April. Month away, yes, April.
We have, we've not only March 4th, we've March 8th by the end of today.
Missed a whole week there.
And there you go. And, but yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Chapman, Ms. Breen, for that rich presentation. We appreciate it. Board members, questions or comments? Sorry, Ms. Lipton? In the box underneath the question mark.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Breen. I would, I really appreciate the part of the presentation where you really highlighted the decreasing number of applicants into teacher preparation programs as compared to the numbers of preparation programs. And just if memory serves me, in the same period where we had fairly consistency, a fair amount of consistency in the number of providers, we saw, I'm looking at from 2011 to 2017, a steady and fairly significant drop from a high of 23,000 and such to about 95, 9600 with the adequate number of providers. And I think that an important takeaway is that there is two parts to the issue of meeting our goal of recruiting and retaining a high-quality educator workforce in our state. Something that I think this Board already knows, because we've discussed it before, that Michigan, to my knowledge, was always, well, always, I don't want to say, you know, but was consistently known to be an exporter of excellent teachers. I recall in the mid to late 2000s where states like North Carolina that were trying to enhance their educational stature among the states were routinely poaching teachers who had been prepared in Michigan and other states as well. So I think that it's important, again, going back to our prior discussion on the budget and what the budget can do, the increased professionalism as reflected by a good salary for teachers, to be able to live and do what they love, I think is extremely important. I will note that in 2010, we saw the largest cut to our per-pupil funding that the state had ever seen since the advent of Proposal A. And I'm not going to venture, you know, far be it from me, I don't have the data to support a direct causal connection. But I would offer that there does seem to be a dramatic decline in those going into the field when school districts were forced to make significant cuts to everything, including teachers, teacher salaries and whatnot, with a fairly constant number of providers. So I do appreciate the presentation and the final thought that we do want to maintain excellent providers, certainly, but we also have to look at the other side of the coin, which is encouraging our young people to go into the honored profession of teaching. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Other board members? Other board members? Hearing and seeing none?
I do have a question.
Ms. Tilly, please.
This is really good, and I appreciate this because I've been wondering where the programs are hosted. But also would like to know, I know that we're waiting on or we're hoping that we will have a big push out or rollout, basically, that we will have the fun to do so. But how are they promoting these programs? Because, you know, the old adage, a business is a business with no sign is a sign of no business. So how are we, or how are they getting the message out to potential teachers that this is an opportunity for them?
Yeah, it's a great question. So I think we're probably a little bit of ways away from that. There's no clarity yet from the state legislature that it is going to approve the recruitment and retention initiatives. There have not been, there have been hearings on the budget. We participated in two hearings, as Mr. Garant noted, on February 24th, but they were broad hearings. They weren't narrow hearings simply on the recruitment and retention initiatives. We've advocated that those recruitment and retention initiatives be approved in a budget supplemental prior to the beginning of spring. It's not clear that there will even be a hearing solely on the recruitment and retention initiatives prior to the beginning of spring, let alone passage by the legislature of those initiatives.
So these programs, these providers are approved, but they are not, the programs are not going?
So these providers are approved, and they have operated for a number of years with their current cohorts of students. What I'm referring to is the opportunity to serve more students if we get some dollars so that people can participate and grow your own programs, particularly programs that support students who are already in college or support staff members who have an interest in and a capability becoming a teacher. So that would change the numbers that they would have, numbers that are here and have been the last few years, as you can see, from 17, really from 16, 17 on, they've lightly increased. Numbers that are where they are now.
So do you know what they're doing now for marketing? It's just...
The, I believe that the issue is not a marketing issue for our 31 traditional programs, our 13 non-traditionals. I think rather the issue is, is that for so many, they don't want to go into public education. We wrote tens of thousands of people, as you know, and asked them if they had an interest in returning to public education. Most did not. Some did, but most did not. We asked some who were certificated and yet who had never taught, we asked them if they wanted to join the profession, not so much. We think that there needs to be an infusion of resources to incentivize people to go into the profession and by extension, to stay in the profession.
And I, I can, I get that, that there's a lot of people that don't want to go into the profession. But I also understand in some communities and even, you know, experience in the Detroit community, sometimes people aren't getting the information.
Yeah.
Information is not being disseminated to certain communities or people that don't always have the resources or access, so...
It's a really good point. So for that reason, we cast a wider net. We asked for additional proposals for certification programs, for EPP programs in 2020, got 11 additional proposals, decided that two were strong enough to approve, the one with Detroit Public Schools Community District, the other also in Detroit, but not with the public school district, but rather with the public school academy system. So we approved those two alternative programs for the very same reason that you're talking about. We felt that each of those two proposals and proposers could help us get some individuals who otherwise would be on the sidelines, wouldn't know about, wouldn't think about, wouldn't be encouraged, associated with. But then too, there's the issue of encouragement. There's the financial support, but there's also the encouragement, telling the person that you can, you know that they are where they are now, but you can see them in a different place in their career, and that can be trajectory-changing, as you well know. That's a big deal. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Yep. Other questions? Comments, concerns, going once, twice, thrice? It is 1204, Board. And a quorum of the Board is present? As you are aware, my annual evaluation is on the agenda this afternoon. According to Section 81A of the Open Meetings Act, a public officer can request a closed session to consider a periodic personnel evaluation. Therefore, I will entertain a motion to convene the closed session, followed by a roll call vote. President Albridge?
I make a motion, the State Board of Education convene in closed session at the request of Dr. Michael Rice, Superintendent of Public Instruction, to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the Superintendent of Public Instruction as provided in Section 81A of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Four.
Second by Dr. Pritchett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, if you could have a, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn absent. Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. We, Board members, please convene in the meeting room next to the location where you pick up lunch. Elected Board members who are joining virtually, please hang up and join the closed session appointment. Thank you.